Okay, I will call the June meeting of the Riverside Township Board to order. Please rise and join me for the pledge of the flag. Mike, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call of the board.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Drapka? Trustee, I don't want to enunciate your name correctly.
Lupfer.
Lupfer.
Lupfer if you're traditional.
Tim?
Uh.
Trustee Hallenbach? Supervisor Wilt?
Present.
Let the records note clerk was also in attendance.
We have for consideration the minutes of the May 9th Board of Trustees meeting. That was the old board, but we need to accept those minutes.
I have a question.
All right.
Just in the second line, it says Tuesday, April 11, 2017. I think it should be May 9.
It, yes.
And then.
You are correct. Are there any other corrections? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
I have a motion. Seven minutes, so it's May 9, 2017, minutes.
I have a motion and then you're a second.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We don't do roll call on minutes, do we?
Whatever your pleasure.
Yeah, I think that's all we have spending. All right, and then we have the minutes of the June 6th special meeting. By the way, trustee Clark, the stationary has been replaced with correctly spelling your name.
Oh, thank you.
This is, this is all still incorrect, but we got delivery yesterday of the corrected stationary.
Thank you very much.
I have a correction on this, I believe, page two at the top with the Riverside Public Library motion. It says that we all were ayes. I believe trustee Lupfer abstained on that.
You are correct.
Yes.
So we'll make that correction.
Very good. Any other corrections or additions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept these minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to accept the June 6th minutes as corrected. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. All right, communications. I think that there was a folder for you.
There's a ton of them because I forgot them in the last meeting. There's a thank you note from Vera, Supervisor Wilt. She met with the Public Works, the Village Public Works, and...
Oh, they're asking about collaboration.
Collaboration for $2,500 for the purchase of the milkweed to be distributed next year. We handle this distribution.
Of milkweed seeds?
Yes.
I think we have some.
Do we have some from prior years? Yeah, they were looking for a grant, but they didn't apply as a grant, and it's one government body to another, so I'm not sure. It's from the village to the township.
Oh, I thought the Village of Riverside with the Public Works Department?
Yes.
They're asking for $2,500.
Well, they can't. That's for the monarchs, to save the monarchs.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a really worthwhile cause in my opinion, but it's just the wrong time. And as I said, I think we have some.
Okay, well, I'll look into that and we'll deal with that.
Yeah, what you just said, seed is not a viable way to do it. It should be plugs.
Ah. Second communication is from the Scottish Home thanking them for funding the $1,100 for the new container garden that we approved at our last meeting. Aging well, thanking them for our contribution of $1,000 sponsorship. A thank you card from our trustee Kowalski for the kind words, the lovely plaque, and the retirement party, and especially to Mary Robb Clark. This appears to be from a school. It was, "Thank you for providing the wonderful space for my students to present their spring recital. The piano was tuned." Doesn't exactly say, she just says that she's the instructor.
Right, that was like right after they had the recital, so.
Lions Club thanking us for the accommodations for the chicken dinner. I told you there was a lot here. Aging well month, thanks for the help, Andrew. A note from Jo Topinka, "Thank you for the enclosed little something. I will always be your friend." I guess it was for the plaque upstairs.
Okay.
It has a card from his mother. Riverside Township, "Thank you for your generous donations towards the purchase of power tools." Hauser Volunteer, I have no idea what that was for.
I remember that in Hauser College.
I don't either.
Oh, I think they...
Maybe we gave them a donation.
Tools for use in building the sets for the theater program.
I don't remember that at all.
No, you didn't.
Riverside School District 96, "Thank you so much for your support of the Cougar Advance Program, eighth graders at the Hauser Junior High. Provided financially needed scholarships to many students." American Cancer Society for their Relay for Life, we gave a donation to them. A note from a constituent, I'm not sure if you enunciate her last name, K.A.C.U.B.A., 324 Selborn Road, "What a wonderful job Fran did in assisting her and thanking us for your wonderful service and courteous." We all know that. And this, I have no idea what this is for, Metropolitan Water Replication.
They're, they also are looking for some kind of a partnership in green infrastructure.
I don't know if this is something that we want to put on the agenda for next month.
We may want to do that. It came at the end of the month, and it's pursuant to our green infrastructure program. The district is currently seeking submission of GI, that is, green infrastructure projects from local government entities. So I mean, if we don't have some kind of an initiative, I don't think that we would be submitting that project to them. But I, we can make copies for the next agenda for you.
Also Vera, do we want to table this for next month, this monarch program? I think we still have stuff from last year. I think Mary Robb.
We will check on that, and we can put that on next month's agenda then.
Okay. That concludes our great amount of communications.
Then the next item is the visitors' remarks. Do we have any remarks from the visitors? Speaking of our assessor.
I'd like to make some remarks with the assessor. Fran Simpkins, and I live on Harrock Road, 252 Harrock Road in Riverside. So our busy, our office has been very busy, even though people come up to say, to me and say, "This is not your busy time, is it?" It really has been kind of busy. So my staff and I have been preparing for the next leg of the appeal period with the Board of Review. So last week, we went downtown to the Board of Review to meet with analysts and Dan Patlick to see how they're going to proceed this year and get any helpful hints and changes, and just so that we could be prepared with the best information to give our constituents. The staff learned a lot, and I learned a lot, and it's always good to make those connections. Also, last week, I brought my staff to the Township Assessor Association meeting where Tom Giacanetti, who is the deputy assessor, our deputy of assessments with the Cook County Assessor's Office, gave a speech and addressed some of our concerns that we had about the reassessment, and also he talked about the article, three, three day article that's been in the newspaper over the last three days about assessments in Cook County. And he's very knowledgeable, and has been with the Assessor's Office for a long time, so it was good for the staff to be there to listen to what he had to say, and also myself. So those articles did not prompt a whole lot of attention. I think our residents here, we keep them abreast, we keep them educated, so we didn't get any calls of concern. No one was overly concerned. It did remind people that they do have to come in for an appeal, so they just called to see if we were on schedule for appeals, and, and we are. We'll probably have the next round of appeals in August. Tax bills, tax bills, second and stomach tax bills will be in the mail by July 1st, and tax, tax rates, I noticed, were posted on the clerk's office. I didn't get a chance to print them out tonight before it came, so I'll have that information tomorrow. So we have the tax rates, the tax bills are coming out in July, then August we'll be working on appeals again. So, so things are going to stay busy for the rest of the summer with the Assessor's Office.
As you will. Thank you. Are there any questions for the assessor?
I have a question. When you submitted an appeal last round, how long will it be until you hear it?
You should have heard by now. The Assessor's Office mailed their decision letters a month after we closed for appeals, so those went out the end of March.
Okay.
So if you give me a call, we'll have that. We have all the files updated in my office, so. Okay, thank you.
I want to say that Fran and another man put on a workshop on what the assessor does, and I attended that, it was in Orlin Park, it was really good, really learned a lot.
Thank you for coming to that, by the way.
And they fed us, too.
Yes. So the Oak Park Assessor, Ali Alcatar, myself, put on a program that really was designed for people, new people to the assessment, assessing offices, and also just, and mostly board people who want to understand a little bit more about how the reassessment process works. And it's a good program, so I think I will have one here later in the year.
That sounds like a good thing. I wasn't aware of the program, so.
Yeah, I'll have it for residents, so.
Great.
We'll be on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran.
Are there any other visitor comments at this point? Hearing none, then we will move on to the report of the supervisor. There actually, it's a bunch of bullet points, and I just wanted to make some remarks about them. You have a lot of background material in your binders regarding these items. Township branded polo shirts for the elected officials. I have provided you a little bit of information from Lands' End, that's where we've often purchased the shirts, and right now, there is a special on if I get these in, which we would probably want to do before the Fourth of July parades anyway. If I can get this in by June 23rd, there's no fee for the setup of the, of the logo or of the, of the inscription. And I would recommend, there's a bunch of different fabrics, and I know everybody has their own preference on which kind of fabric and which kind of fit, and of course, your size. I would say if you could get by the end of this week, if you could get us your choice of that, I would recommend, and I would entertain a motion for that, that we allocate no more than $100 per board member from the office expenses budget, and then you could, from that, you should be able, at the costs in here, to get anywhere from two to four shirts. And I think that for some uniformity, if their, their color that is the dark cobalt blue is a very sharp look, so if, if you want to look at this in color, I know that we've got a couple of brochures here, if you'd like to look at those. And then, as I said, I'd entertain a motion to approve an expenditure, if that's not the amount you want to go with, or if you want to specify a number of shirts and want to make them all one fabric, that's fine, too, but that would be my recommendation.
I have a summary of that.
That we allocate $100 per, per person from the board, including the assessor, to, so that we have some branded.
So will you want to order these together, like we give you our...
Yeah, if you would give us, give us the size and which, which style shirt, whether, and they, then there's, each of them has like a different fit. So if you would go through there, see what their fits look like, which fabric, like I said, some people prefer the wicking style, some people want an all cotton shirt, so, and, you know, I just, I had one yesterday that I wore to the luncheon for the golf outing, and it's pretty much cotton, and it's extremely comfortable. Their, their shirts are good quality and wear well. This is from the last time I was on the board, so it's at least, it's at least eight years old, and it's...
Oh, my gosh, you still have it.
I still have it, you know? Good bohemian, it's tucked away in the closet. I also have a couple of other shirts that don't fit as well, but that's another story altogether. So I would say just, I have a motion for $100 per person. Do I have a second on that? I don't think I...
I'll say, Mary Robb.
Mary...
Trustee Clark.
Okay, trustee Clark seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, want to do a roll call on expenditures?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Get us that information. Motion is carried, and if you have any more questions, please let me know. Regarding more formal events, polo shirts are one thing, but sometimes you want to name tag for a meeting. I don't know if you would prefer that. I don't think that the last board had those, but I've been looking around at different providers, and we could get them for, it looks like, under $10 apiece. And those would be the magnetic ones, so it doesn't put any holes in your clothing or anything. If you'd like me to get something, I can, I can find a design and, and get those done. We would do that.
Those are so helpful when you go to like the town, Springfield, and other things that we go to, the educational ones, and just even like at the Christmas lawn. I think it'd be helpful, you know, if we're here to have them on, or...
Right, even if you're wearing it with a polo, I think, you know, to have your name on it.
Oh, right, you have your name, so people know. So I would make a motion that we get name tags.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second to approve of purchasing name tags for everyone?
I'll say, maybe.
Okay.
We want to put a power on on that, plus or minus 10%.
Sure, you want to...
So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, $100.
$100.
$100 for seven name tags, plus or minus 10%. Does that work?
And do we have included Fran?
I included Fran.
Yes, that's, yes. The only thing I would ask, let me know if you would prefer like Tim, or Timothy, Tom, or Thomas, you know, that kind of thing. So Mike, Michael, I'd like to make sure that we order them as you would like them.
By the same date.
I would say by the same date. Please get me that information. So we have a motion. Would you take the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Next item is simply informational. The landscaping has been contracted with Lofton Landscaping of Brookfield. The owner lives in Riverside. We, I asked at least three vendors for bids, and frankly, that was the only one that came in. We're looking at $25 per mowing, pruning and weeding of garden beds at $50 per man hour as needed, and a fall cleanup of $125. So I signed that contract the other day, and they came out already. On Friday, they, they did the lawn, and we'll see about getting the rest of the, the work done, but...
Does that include a spring cleanup, too?
Or... It doesn't include a spring cleanup per se. It'll, it'll include the blowing away of wheat, of leaves and all of that in the fall, and then I would say the, the pruning and, and weeding, I think, would be spring cleanup before. So, you know, as we, if I order them in, and it's still well within the budget that's been set, even if, if we did all those things on a fairly regular basis, so. I didn't bring it to the board because it was budgeted, and it was an emergency, we really needed to get it done. Next item is, I'm sorry.
Just to set it a little further.
Sure.
The maintenance is great, Lofton's local, but it's looking pretty old.
It is.
I'm not a guy who wants to spend a lot of money, but there's small things we could do that might update the front of it, so maybe we think about this year, trying to figure out a way to update the front of the building without spending too much money on it.
Okay.
Maybe for next year implementation, but, I mean, if you go through your records, it's probably been 30 or 40 years since something's been done.
The, the one thing we will have to keep in mind is if we do anything of major consequence, we have to be aware that we would have to pay prevailing wage on major work. Maintenance is one thing, but actual landscape design, if we got into any pavers or anything like that, major planting trees and such, as long as it's not just a replacement, the, the prevailing wage act would kick in, that gets real expensive real fast.
I think the sculpt of what we're talking about would fit under maintenance.
Okay, all right.
Traditional shrub removal and replacement is considered maintenance.
Okay, so if you have any recommendations on that, certainly that's your expertise, so I'd welcome anything that you'd like to present on that. Okay? Thank you. Onward, the Assessor's local travel reimbursement, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that you may have noted in looking at the salaries that were set by the board as the law provides a certain amount of time before the elections. In doing that, although the last board did set some, some significant increases in the Assessor's compensation in terms of salary, they took away the, the local, what's, what's the term I'm looking for? They took away the, the travel allowance, that's it. They took away the travel allowance, which is already given to the clerk and the supervisor, but they took it from the assessor. So it doesn't, that doesn't kick in because Fran's salary doesn't change, or any assessor's salary doesn't change until her new term begins in January. However, actually, in the first year of that new term, the, the income or the compensation is going to be less than it was with the travel allowance. I've talked about it, we can't change compensation, however, she gave me several examples of the kind of travel that she does, and if we were to require her to turn in as the, as the Resolution 2016-4 calls for, basically on each travel, we would have so many little bitty trips of under five miles, or, you know, around five to 10 miles, that it would really become a complicated process. So I've spoken to our attorney, and he agrees that I could ask for simply a monthly accounting for it. I've estimated that it'll probably come to about the same amount as she was given in an allowance, but we can't pay it as an allowance. It will have to be reimbursement, and that reimbursement actually might be of some advantage because it won't be taxable the way the regular income would have been. So just, that was for your information. I've done, you know, we've spoken about the, the issue and how, and I really can't tell you, I don't know what the legislative history on that was, but it's something that we have to deal with over the next four years, so that's how I'm going to deal with it. Are there any questions regarding that?
So Fran just hands in her travel expenses and gets reimbursed.
She'll get reimbursed, right. It'll be a reimbursement rather than an allowance. Mm-hmm. Next item is that for the food pantry, right now, we're using all kinds of donated grocery bags that flop around, they're not very...
Wait, is it mandatory training?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the mandatory training. Okay, let me explain. In here, you've got two sheets, the magazine, the prospective magazine actually indicated that both the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom Information Act is mandatory for all elected officials. In fact, it's, then I called about it because it didn't, when I took the class myself online, it didn't say that the, the FOIA one is mandatory, it's the Open Meetings Act that is mandatory. So I checked with the toy office, and they assured me that was correct, and then later that afternoon, they sent out an email correcting the article, but the way they wrote the email, it was as confusing as the article had been. So anyway, if you would, I would suggest all of you log into what's at the bottom of the Open Meetings Act, that website, take the Open Meetings Act 1, and if, if you're a first time elected official, I would suggest go do the FOIA as well. It's not mandatory, however, I think it's a good thing for you to know, and there's no failing this class, it's one of those things where they ask you questions, it's, yeah, and then if you're wrong, you go back and you try again, and, you know, there's, there's no grading or anything, it's just a good exercise to go through.
I have a question.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt, if you've already taken these classes, do you still have to take it again?
No, it's for first time elected officials. If you are the designated FOIA officer, then you have to take it every year.
Right.
Both of our staff people are certified each year, they've been the, in, in practice, they are the designated FOIA officer. So I, I would say that we're covered on that.
How do we find out if the certification I took earlier covers the Open Meetings Act? I did it for a commission for the village I served on.
You know, the online thing, they're, they're two separate, there's two separate exercises.
Do you have to, do you have to re-register every year? Then you would probably have to...
You probably are okay. You're probably okay.
Well, they, because they make you take it every, you know, if you're, they...
Every term you need to take it, yeah.
Every term.
So I would say you probably should take it now, and then you'll be good for the four years.
Is there, anyway, you guys can email me that link?
Uh, it's right in the, oh, you want, so that you can just cut and paste it?
Yeah, I gotta cut and paste, because somehow I can never...
Type it in accurately.
I just show it.
If, you know what, if you go to the Attorney General's website, it's going to be right there.
It's easy.
Yeah, it's easy to find, the Illinois Attorney General. If you Google it, you'll get right there.
What's this? Okay.
Okay. The next item, and then is the purchase of reusable tote bags for the food pantry use. I, I provided you... I, I provided you, this is in color. If you'd like to see what they're in color, there's all kinds of colors available. I don't know that that makes the difference. I think that, um, if we purchased two-hundred-and-fifty of probably the, uh, the non-laminated one, the one on the left, at a dollar twenty apiece, uh, there certainly is that kind of funding within the food pantry account. And as a matter of fact, for your information, we just got a fifteen-hundred-dollar donation last week. Someone just walked in, said, "I'd like to make a donation to the food pantry," and wrote a check for fifteen-hundred dollars.
Oh, wonderful.
Um, it, it made the staff very excited because they said with that kind of money, we could buy a refrigerator and freezer for the perishables that we get and especially like at, uh, holiday time for turkeys and hams and things like that. So, we may look at that. I would let you know if we make that kind of expenditure out of it. But, um, but I think that that was a lovely donation and I'm just basically telling you that I think that, um, the tote bags, for one, they sit square, so the items that go into it don't flop around. If you've been in the office, when we've got a cart full of food for the food pantry, it's pretty sloppy-looking. And, uh, people walking out of here, you know, the, the bags cut and they're, they're just awkward to carry. This would be squared off. It would sit nicely and it would be easier on the hand. We would ask, ask them to bring them back, but if they don't, I mean, it's not such a ridiculous expense.
Are we gonna have anything written on there?
I think we, it should just say Riverside Township.
I agree.
And I don't think it should be labeled "food pantry" or anything like that.
No, 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 no.
I think that this is an item that we might also want to distribute on some other occasions. And, uh, certainly, you know, that it, it will be a more dignified way of, of getting some supplies.
Well, so do you, well, two-hundred-and-fifty do you order, or do you think we need five-hundred?
That's a, yeah, I, you know, I don't think it'll take up a lot of space. This building is certainly big enough so that we could store more. If you want to make a motion, make it a greater amount. That's fine with me.
Well, what other occasions would we be using them for?
I don't think, right, we could use them for pretty much anything.
Or else we, or we could reorder two. How many bags do they need?
They, they each get two grocery bags and sometimes if we have an overabundance of like paper goods and laundry detergent and things like that, they take a one of those as well. There's two of food plus, plus one sometimes. So, we may not have to do a third bag this way. These are going to hold more than the typical plastic bags from Tony's or something. They, we usually do it by weight and I'm trying to remember how much it is that he puts in. Is it five pounds or ten pounds and, ten pounds maybe per bag that he puts in?
Well, I make the question that we order two-hundred-and-fifty of the non-woven shopper tote bag at, uh, a hundred-and-twenty, I mean, at a, a dollar twenty each?
Okay.
With, and have, uh, the Riverside Township imprinted on them.
Very good. I would say that we could use them at like senior fairs, but then we'd need to order a whole lot more. People love their shopping bags.
Well, the thing is, is that, you know, without seeing it, the quality and stuff like that.
Right. We can go for a smaller order and then we can always increase it.
There you go.
But you can always reorder.
And less to store. All right. Um, I have a motion and do I hear a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and second to order two-hundred-and-fifty of the non-woven shopper tote bags. Um, any, if you have a particular color in mind, we can do that. But, um, generally speaking, we'll just get a nice, uh, it'll be a, a nice earth-friendly, uh, way of distributing, uh, food. Uh, is there any more discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote, please.
Uh, Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Looper?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All righty. And finally, it's just for your information, I've included, uh, details on all of the parades that we are registered to be in. You should know that, uh, between Trustee Hollenbach and Trustee Drapka, we, it looks like we're gonna have four cars available for the parade. So, um, I'll, um, I don't know. If you're going to need some people to go pick up the three cars probably, or if you had...
I, I was working on, emailed the correspondence, um, so, I, I was working on something and, uh, I don't, um, it's not prepared yet, but I was just gonna make sure they get everything to, to everybody here, um, and details on that, um...
As trustees, we're gonna do the Riverside, Riverside parade and then are we gonna do Brookfield?
We're gonna split up. We're gonna send two to Brookfield and two to North Riverside.
Okay.
All right. So, if you have your preference, let us know and, uh, we'll take it from there.
That's Riverside.
Yeah, I thought so. All right. On to the next item. Trustees' reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
Uh, seniors met, um, the first Monday of the month and we had an excellent violinist, uh, and, um, Irish fiddler come in play. She's a woman named Catherine Cowell who lives here in town. She's about twenty. She just qualified for the, uh, national, or no, the World Championship Irish Fiddle Players. So, she was really a great program.
Very good. Uh, would you please remember to email us with the dates that you will be in and outside the, the buildings so that we can plan accordingly? Thank you.
I've been approached by the whole group in support of the, uh, extending the bike path through downtown Riverside. And their ideal path, they go across the bridge. And they're looking to approach us to see what level of interest we have in, um, participating with that, at least, uh, looking and seeing what they're proposing.
Um, thank you for reminding me. Um, Mayor Sells was in the other day. Uh, he was in the building, saw that I was here and stopped to chat about that. And I'd read about it also in the paper. Uh, the, the issue could be that that is intended as a footbridge and the railings are not terribly high. And this isn't the first time it came up. Uh, we are responsible and liable for the safety on that bridge. And, uh, that's something we'd have to really get some, some expert opinions on because, um, walking a footbridge and riding at a higher elevation on a bicycle on a bridge that swings, and it does swing if you walk across that thing, uh, that could be, uh, issue of liability. So, like I said, I would want to do some serious studies before we say okay to that. Um, look at what our liabilities might be, what our risk is, because we're all about having to manage our risk. We could certainly say something like you have to walk it across that bridge. How you enforce that is another story. Also, it is intended as a, you know, a, one person at a time or bas- basically...
Pedestrian.
pedestrian. So, I'd hate to see bike groups come across and all of a sudden, you've got twenty people on the bridge at once that could...
There's a lot of questions about bringing a bike path through a downtown business district.
Right.
And then over a walking path.
Right.
A walking bridge. So, I understand the, the, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, even before they come to us.
Right. This downtown can be pretty scary just to navigate with an automobile, much less on a bicycle.
Friday at four o'clock, add twenty bikes into it.
Right, right. Okay, well, thank you for bringing, bringing that up and, uh, sorry that I forgot to, to mention that one. I think we will be approached some more about that and, um, I'll keep you advised. And if we get any kinds of, uh, formal requests about it, I'll certainly bring it to the board.
The, the other thing is there's, um, a, a move afoot, uh, to, uh, there, I've been approached by people looking to get more involved in the food pantry and community garden, uh, aspect. They have an idea where they want to put a community garden and then they would, they would wanna help out with the food pantry as well as have the community garden start donating some fresh produce and that kind of thing to the food pantry. So, there might be a, a grant application or a committee that we're discussing, but, uh, there are a group of interested residents who wanna get a little more involved in that. So, we'll see how that, where that leads us.
Uh, they want to use the tower gardens?
That's what we could do.
Or what is the term?
The community garden, I think that there's a lot on Burlington that they're looking at. Um, but their goal would be to help supplement the, uh, the macaroni and cheese with some fresh, fresh food. I think it'd be a good, good way to reach out to the community.
Uh, I know that, uh, some of the people can get vouchers for the farmer's market. Did we approve that this year?
I, apparently it's been a couple of years since we've done that. I asked the staff about that and they said that they haven't...
We did it last year.
Last year they did it.
We did it last year, yeah. Last year was the first year we did it.
Hmm, I thought it was two years ago.
Or maybe it's the two years, two years, so...
Yeah, I think that the staff said that it, it was a couple of years ago and that last year, when they moved the farmer's market across the tracks, that it, it didn't seem to fly as well or something. I don't know.
Okay.
Certainly, I, because I was, I asked about that right away. Don't we supplement with some fresh produce that way and, with vouchers? And I was told that they, we hadn't done it last year, so it was probably the year before that we did do it.
I thought we did it last year too. Maybe they didn't use as many because, um, I remember seeing the report on how much meat was bought and how many eggs and they, and fresh produce. Um, they have to use it for stuff like that. They can't use it for candy and they can't, you know, they can't use it for slurpees or smoothies or whatever.
I'm wondering if there were any issues with, um, the vendors as to when they would come and...
Get the money.
Get the money. That could have been an issue because the farmer's market goes till, what, seven-thirty in the evening or so.
It's just seven.
And this, um, the staff isn't here by then, so they, a lot of them aren't...
I don't remember anybody, any issues with the vendors.
Oh, okay.
But, um, usually somebody, uh, from the farmer's market comes and asks us to do that.
We have not been approached, um, and they just started last week, I believe, correct?
Yes, last, last Wednesday was the first one.
Right. Um, who, is it the chamber that runs that or is the village?
It's the village.
Village, okay. Let me see if, uh, if there's been any movement of what to do then. Okay, any other reports?
Trustee Riverside Township Mental Health Board, our next meeting will be June twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Uh, at the next Township Board meeting, I will go over, uh, our needs assessment is coming in for the final, uh, coming in for the final, uh, approval on that. So, I'll, I'll present that. Uh, you have the notes and our financials in, in your package.
Thank you for all that information. Please look it over and be prepared to, to ask some more questions. And if you can make it to their meeting on the twenty-first, I'm sure that they would welcome you as well.
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I don't have any old business. We're a new board, so we don't have old business to carry over yet. Under new business, uh, by, the first thing is really open for discussion. These are just some, uh, potential committees that I wondered if any of you would be interested in sharing committees on. I know Mary Robb is already dealing with the senior services. I'm guessing you might want to continue with that?
Yes.
Very good. And, uh, we've talked about expanding youth services, um, that perhaps cultural and educational programs could be enhanced in the township, um, special events. There may be other things that I'm not thinking of here. So, I'm not, I mean, if any of you want to propose that we establish some of these and would like to volunteer to chair any of these special interest committees, we can certainly make that decision today, or it's something for you to think about for the next meeting.
Sarah?
Yes.
I would maybe make a recommendation that we have a marketing committee?
Okay.
And we want to include the mental health board also.
The, uh, structure of this, um, I'd like to look into, um, reaching out to the community to get them involved. Um, maybe not have committees of board members, but have them, I think the legal term would be a commission where we appoint people and have the board liaison report back to the board for their, what they're doing. I think that would be a very effective way, uh, to get a lot of work done and not necessarily put it on the, the board, the trustees. You know, with the special events, I know, uh, people, there's people who want to come, get back to work and it would be a great opportunity for them to pad their resume. Uh, we've mentioned the, the people who are interested in the food pantry and the community garden. Um, wouldn't the board be interested in pursuing that kind of structure to these commissions slash committees? Where we, bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so like, would, would like each trustee head up a certain commission or committee and then it's their duty to make up the committee commission however they deem fit, whether it's themselves or if they get five people to serve on the committee and hold on, hold certain, you know, meetings? Or, I mean, what are you, what do you foresee there?
Well, I, I wanted to see what the board felt about that. I mean, I, I was thinking that it would be the, a trustee taking the lead, sort of like Mary Robb has done with the seniors. Um, and certainly, I don't think that you have to do it alone and, and Trustee Clark's been pretty, uh, pretty independent in having to do that. And the, uh, staff has supported how best they could in terms of at least room assignments and so forth. But, um, I think that it's great to enlist the community. My thinking was that perhaps, um, perhaps in the early fall, we have some kind of an open forum, kind of a town hall meeting, um, inviting the public. What, what would you like to see the township doing? And, uh, you know, maybe open up and see what kind of volunteers might be interested in helping with things. There might be people who are interested in supporting the food pantry in some expansive ways, for example. Partnering with a, a community garden or something on that order, uh, or volunteering to come in and organize things and, and not having to have staff always, you know, looking out for, um, what's, what there is, maybe some involvement and rather than going out to buy things, maybe a targeted drive for certain things that could be used in the food pantry, things like that. So, I mean, I would like to engage the community more in all of these things, but I also would like to have some, uh, board, uh, reeling it in, you know, kind of less owing all of that energy to, um, to go forward.
Well, that being said, um, I, I think that because this is a new thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Township, uh, this township never did this before in branching out and putting something together. I think we should do it right, figure out how we would like everything to be structured. And so, maybe we can come back next month and, or, or even wait until September after this town hall, whatever. But I think that we need to, um, make the structure so we're all ready to go, so it's, no, but I think, I like, I like where we're going with this. I just, let's put it all together, structure it, and then assign people different committees. Uh, except for you, because I think that you already got what you got.
Unless you'd like to expand.
Right, I don't think that applies here, that particular case, but, you know, you know what I mean, so...
Well, and in a way, I'm sure that you work with the seniors to see what they're interested in and, and you have kind of a citizens committee there, less formal.
I really don't have a citizens committee, but the seniors are very vocal.
I was trying to put it in a nice way.
Hey, let me know what's good and what's not good, so...
All right. Well, maybe you could get some support so that they'd be happy.
Yeah, I, I, you know, would like them to start helping to plan meetings.
So, that's, that's my suggestion.
And I'll also do a little research. I'll try to reach out to some other townships and see if they do anything similar and, and if commissions work for them or if committees are, are, um, the better structure. Uh, we also, this summer, we'll, a lot of us will be going to the boot camps, so hopefully we can network with some people there as well.
I'd definitely be interested in special ones, um, and if there's food metrics in the garden.
And if there's improved metrics in the garden to a second house. Probably it's kind of my area, so. I think that's a great way for us to go out and be able to-
Concentrate our efforts. That way, you're doing seniors, I'm doing youth, you're doing this and that way we have focused trustee taking the lead of this. I agree with you on that, that we really need them to push it and move it.
Right, and I wouldn't presume to assign those things to you. I think each of you knows where your talents lie or where your experience lies. So I would like you to step up and volunteer and perhaps suggest a committee that you really have a passion for.
I've done some speakers events in the past, so if I can, if, and kind of the speakers kind of fell in my lap.
Those are the best kind.
So, you know, I, if something does something, if I can find a really good speaker, you know, I'd like to do a speaker's event again.
Very good. All right, well-
Should be, should be.
Put it back on the agenda for next month and I'll do a little research. If you come up with anything, please pass it along to me so that I can share, you know, make copies of any, anything you've found or, you know, so that we have something in the packet, so that we have a little bit more focused discussion.
More structured.
All right. Very good, thank you. Onto the potential of a township sponsored day at the fair. I had asked staff as well as individually, I had asked some of you if you thought of anything and this is something that occurred a few times. Oh, remember when we used to go to the state fair. So we've done a little bit of research. You've got the, the dates of the fair. To make it most accessible to the most people, we would probably suggest that Saturday, August twelfth. As my staff members have suggested, by then the butter cow hasn't melted yet and and everything is fresh and pretty yet. That happens to also be, I believe that's-
Kids' Day.
Children's Kids' Day.
Kids' Day versus Father's Day.
Right, there's all kinds of events that are listed in here. We've done a little bit of research. There's no group rates for tickets, but as you see, they're quite reasonable. Children are under twelve are free. Adults are ten dollars and seniors are only three dollars, so we could build that into whatever we charge. We also have done some investigating on buses. People just don't seem to respond terribly well and sometimes they tell you one thing on the phone and when they send you a proposal, it's very different. That was the case with Chicago Charter on the phone and now, mind you, we're talking about probably leaving at seven forty-five, not eight forty-five. The woman on the phone repeated that seven forty-five three or four times and then wrote up eight forty-five. And then the other thing is that she quoted, it would be about twelve hundred dollars and as you see, it's a lot more than that. It's thirty-three hundred with them. However, US coaches have also quoted and we're looking at fifty-five to fifty-seven passenger vehicles. Usually if you have a cooler with water or soft drinks or anything like that, you're going to lose a couple of those seats. But the pricing there, as you see, is in the eighteen hundred plus range and that we could build in. We, we should talk about if we do something like this, how much, you know, do we want to subsidize any part of it? Or do we just want to, you know, make it a pass through? So what, what do you think of some?
I think it's a great idea. But I'd be willing to, to wait till, well, see if we wait till the next meeting, we're really cutting it close.
Right, right, we might not have-
But I think it's a great idea, I really do. And I think that Saturday is a wonderful thing. We're probably going to have to put a little advertisement in the-
Oh, yeah.
The local paper.
Right. You would have to promote it.
And we'll see what we can come up with. I think we may get a pretty good response on it. How long a ride is it down to Springfield?
Three hours.
Three hours.
Or three to three to noon.
Yeah.
It goes by like that.
When you're dealing with a bus, sometimes it's four, but you don't have the same-
I mean, you want to make sure that they have the facilities of that.
Right, but that's why we're looking at leaving at seven forty-five, because that gives you enough time to get down there. Just not as, as the doors open, but pretty much after.
And we can buy the tickets online. You know, cut off date and so on and so forth. I think it's a great idea.
So are we gonna, we're opening this up to?
The township.
The township.
Anybody on the township, I would say.
So are we charging them for the bus ride or are we paying for it? Because it'd be, I just calculated, it was about thirty-four dollars a person.
What is your pleasure? I mean, there are, you know, there are town programs, there's a budget for town programs and certainly that would fit into that. I think people appreciate things if they pay something for it. And you also have a better lock on them actually showing up.
Right, yeah, that's a value to them.
Yeah, I, I hate to make it completely free for that reason.
I wouldn't mind, you know, us taking care of the bus and having them pay for their tickets. Such as, you know, it's ten dollars for an adult, he said.
Yeah, kids are free and seniors are, are three dollars, so.
Three bucks, and that, that makes it a little affordable and, and like you said, it gets them kind of committed.
Let me ask you this. I know that you, the, the discussion is to have the trip on Saturday because obviously the weekend. However, you know, on the Monday, you have senior and scout day. So if you were to partner or get the word out to the Golden Ager's in North Thirkside, the, the boy scout groups in the area here, maybe we might be able to make sure that that bus is filled and you're bringing the people down, you know, and plus then you have the seniors getting in for free on that Monday. So you don't have to worry about that cost and all you're dealing with is the, is the bus cost.
I think, I'm, I'm concerned about the constituency. If we just put an ad out there. Show up, we'll go. I'm not sure there'll be a draw, but if we have the scouts and we have the seniors and there's we, we have a constituency to go after, I, I feel it would be a better opportunity for us to fill the bus.
Makes sense.
Okay. Entertained a motion for, I, I'm presuming that the price is going to be similar it, for the bus on a different day. We, we got the quotes for this particular day, but I'm sure that it's going to be in a similar range for weekday.
Would you do something kind of like a package where it's fifteen dollars, bus ride, box lunch and admittance to the fair, all included?
I don't think you'd want a box lunch, because you want to eat at the fair.
Right, I would say you would want to have coffee and maybe some, you know, donuts or something or muffins on the bus.
Right.
Certainly, there would be some refreshments on the bus. Like I said, I think we should have a cooler full of water bottles and, and maybe some juices or something like that as well. But I agree, I would not provide a lunch because there's so many opportunities to eat at the fair.
But something like that, say bus ride, admittance to the fair, plus coffee and donuts and down there, you know. Put the package together and say, this is what you're getting for your ten dollars.
Right.
Five dollars, I mean.
Well, the seniors, if it's Monday the fourteenth, the seniors are, are gone for free, am I right?
Correct.
How about the scouts don't have to pay?
But do we want-
Yeah, but if you're on your twelve, then you get in for free. I'm sorry, trustee.
Oh, good. Do we want to be there twel-, above, till seven forty-five? That seems like a late leaving time for me, especially for seniors.
Well, we could do it, we could move that up a little bit. I wanted them to have the opportunity. I don't want to have people on the bus then saying, are we stopping for dinner somewhere?
Right, yeah.
So I want them to get the opportunity to grab a bite to eat before they leave, even if it's something that they're going to bring on the bus. I mean, we could leave at seven or something. I wouldn't leave too much, because it's a big, they're big grounds. And it's going to take, you know, you're not going to get there even at seven forty-five, so let's say you're going to get there around eleven. By the time you get through the gates and all, because it, it takes a little while when they move along. You know, you want to give them a decent day at the fair. So I wouldn't go too much-
Yeah. My concern for the seniors is the walking at the fair. You know, that, because especially if that bus drops us off in that back parking lot where the picnic is, that's a long walk to get to the, you know, where the other activities are. So that would be my concern with the seniors.
Being Monday though, I don't think it'll be as busy as this Saturday.
Well, maybe not as busy, but still a long walk.
Yeah.
Yeah, the walking is a challenge and I don't think they, they still don't have any kinds of little carts or anything like that, no.
They don't have good little, those carts?
Oh, people, not for visitors.
Yeah, no, it was the staff does. I mean, frankly, my kids grew up, or my son grew up going to the state fair when my husband was the director of the ethnic village and he always had a golf cart and he'd come and, and take a lot of people to, to some places back and forth. But we don't have that kind of connection anymore, so.
I think they do have, like, if you are a senior, I think they do have some golf cart rides for the seniors, don't they?
I don't know, right.
I think that there's-
There's gotta be some type of handicap thing.
Yeah, I think there's something kind of like the safari train at the zoo that can get you from one point, from point A to point B, but it only runs fairly irregularly. I mean, otherwise they have the sky ride that goes, you know, if you want to get to the other end, you can take that one way and then work that area. I, I don't know that we can be all things to all people. We can get them there and we can get them in the door and then I think people have to be pretty much on their own. And if they, if they're not up to going to the fair, I, I don't want to take that responsibility or, or have them complaining to us about how we made it an impossible trip, you know. I think we'd have to promote it with, there's lots of walking.
Have we done this before?
Years ago, years ago we did. It's probably been, I think when Pat was in office, they, they did it when she was-
Did they?
I think they did it, maybe ten, twelve years ago was probably the last time. They used to do a regular annual trip there, but it's been a long time.
How do you foresee being able to fill the bus? Because that's, that, that's my main concern and that's why I brought up the switching into Monday and partnering with the scouts and the, the senior clubs. I mean, how do you, because that's probably my concern. But do, do you have a concern about filling the bus on, on Saturday? I mean, obviously, the point of this is to get people who wouldn't necessarily go down to the fair to go down to the fair.
And, you know, our thinking was on Saturdays, you're going to have more likelihood of families going down.
Right.
So again, it's who are we going to try to serve? Kids are involved in day camps and things like that during the week. Yes, I think we'll, I think we'll get a certain number of seniors if we do it on the weekday. And I don't know if we have enough lead time for the scouts to come out. My concern is that they may be on summer breaks already. I, I haven't been involved in scouting a long time, but when I was, it was kind of school year driven. And here we are already being-
So what are you looking for us?
Well, I would, I would say if you, if you would prefer to do it on a weekday, if you want to sponsor the bus, you know, there's, there's a number of open questions here. We could, we could agree to pay for the bus, but charge, let's say, let's say it's a flat ten dollars for everybody. And that ten dollars will get them breakfast on the bus, it'll get them the ride down and it'll get them in the door. We're taking the chance that some of those people are going to cost us ten dollars to get in the door, but other people are going to either be free or cost three dollars, you know, so depending on which day we choose. It's up to you. I mean, as I said, staff thought weekend was more family possible, but certainly we've got a different constituency. We have the, the potential of scouts and seniors that would go on the Monday. I, I'll go along with and I'll prepare either one. I just don't know that we can, you know, we certainly can't do two days and I think we need to come to a decision as soon as possible, because we'll need time to promote it and we'll need time to book the bus and all that. Can I poll, poll the group? What do you think would be a better day, the Saturday or the Monday? Tom?
I think if you reach out, maybe to the different rec departments, see if they could bring in some kids, that kind of thing. Monday would be good, but.
I'm trying to run the risk of when you bring children, if they're unsupervised, then somebody has to watch them.
Yeah, I don't think the rec departments are going to do that. They have their camps, they have their schedules and they have like school hours and they're not going to commit to an evening thing.
I'm sorry, I'm sure.
No, that's, no, absolutely. I, I agree. I'm supporting what you said.
Well, I was saying that maybe that would be Monday. If not, then Saturday. I mean, I, I just don't have enough information, I could.
Tim?
I think Monday would be the best, but.
Mary Robb? Mike?
As long as we're going, you know, as long as you're planning a trip, you know, I think it's great here.
I, I guess my question is, we tend to do things for seniors and we, you know, we make grants to certain organizations. Do we want to make something a little bit more family friendly for once? I don't know.
I can tell you my seniors want to go because they're not going to miss exercise class. I would have to change exercise class, which I, I can do, but they will not miss exercise class.
Okay, good to know.
So there, I normally plan our November pizza party and our Christmas party on a Tuesday or a thir- on a Wednesday. That's when I normally do it and they are like, you know, you can't plan the pizza party and the Christmas party on a Wednesday because we're too hot and sweaty to come after work, exercise.
Okay.
I think the next Saturday, two weeks.
I think, you know, you could really work a family thing and I don't know if we want to have something like a family rate. You know, for, you know, adults and up to four kids, maybe twenty-five dollars.
Tim, I have, I have a question. Can we approve the trip here tonight and the cost to be determined?
Based on?
Based on the supervisor's recommendations at a later date.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we do exactly what I just proposed.
That we, that we book the trip for the- So your, your motion is to book, book the bus for the Saturday?
Book the bus for the trip down to state fair in Springfield on Saturday, August eleventh or twelfth.
Twelve.
Twelfth and it would be the supervisor's discretion as to the cost associated with that at a later time.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion to that motion? All right then. Why don't we go, it's an expenditure for that bus and I, I'm inclined to use US coach ways. Would you please take the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Jack?
Yes.
Trust, trustee Luthler?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good, thank you. Yes.
Where's that coming out of the village?
Uh, that would be under town programs.
Town programs.
That may have been, we may, we might need to amend that, a motion to say for it to come out of town programs.
To make it what?
To come out of town programs, the budget, to amend the motion.
Okay, you want-
For it to come out of the town program.
The town program fund.
Yeah. So do you want to amend it?
Yeah.
Then I'll second the amendment.
Is there any objection to that change, to that modification to the motion? Everyone's all right with that? All right, thank you. All right, next item is we need to adopt the prevailing wage act. The resolution, you have it in your books, following the information on the bus trip. It's the standard ordinance. You have all the background to it, what the current prevailing wages are and so forth. And I make a mo-
I make a mo- uh, motion that we accept the, or we adopt the prevailing wage act. Would it be of two thousand seventeen?
Yes, and whatever that number is, is it two? Okay, that will be ordinance number twenty seventeen two. I have a motion by trustee Clark, do I hear a second to adopt the
I'll second, okay.
Trustee Dracko, second?
Yes.
So, why are we, um, adopting this now?
Because we must adopt it before the end of June or July, I just had my calendar here, let me see. Uh, we must, uh, adopt it. Uh, last day to adopt it is July fifteenth, and then we have to file it with the Illinois Department of Labor.
Why do we have to, excuse me?
I'm sorry, no, we have to pass it by June, by June thirtieth, and then it has to be filed by July fifteenth.
Why do we have to adopt this? I'm sorry, I'm not
It's the law.
Yeah, but isn't it a, why, I mean, why, it's done every single year, right?
Yes, it is.
Then what? I'm not understanding why.
Uh, because the, because the prevailing wage changes from year to year,
Uh huh.
and it's, it's the law that we must do it, so, uh, if you would like a reference for it, it's eight twenty ILCS one thirty slash four and
Yeah, I just wasn't, I don't, I, I'm just not following that, it has to be done every single year. I just thought that it's done, it's over with.
No, because the prevailing wage changes from year to year, and, uh, it's, it's just part of the record that must be done.
They, they, they want to
And we have to publish it.
Townships, towns, villages, cities, to at least put that before the board because they put a patent together with the new prevailing wages that you looked at and reviewed it. Every year, every town or city has to go through it every
Okay, I was just not, I'm not, I'm not
So if we didn't adopt it, would, would it go away now? Would we violate the law?
Yes, we would.
So they, you're in between a rock and a hard place.
So, I have a motion and a second to adopt the prevailing wage ordinance, number twenty seventeen dash two. Please take the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dracko?
Yes.
Trustee Luttrell?
Oh, sure, yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yeah. And now, the, um, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund also requires, um, the appointment of an authorized agent. It has traditionally been the supervisor, although, um, the, uh, the staff usually actually does the administration, but, uh, we need to designate who the authorized agent is for the township. And we also need to adopt a resolution, this is something newer, um, but we need to adopt the resolution that states who is eligible for it, and, um, the way it's written, it's supposed to be, okay, you have that, uh, the special memorandum, number three thirty-seven, and it should, we need to reaffirm what positions are eligible for the, uh, participation in the IMRF. Basically, this pertains mostly to trustees, because the question would be, do we see the, uh, hourly need that there's at least six hundred hours per year spent at meetings, preparing for meetings in the office, and actually conferring with constituents? That's all counted as performance of duty and can be included in the hourly standard. Um, but if you're just on call, waiting for the phone to ring, that doesn't count, so. Basically, we need to file this now, the, when they did audits, they found that perhaps they were covering people that shouldn't have been covered, and, uh, if you, if we do not give them this notice, they could throw people off with it.
I make a motion to have the authorized agent of Bureau of Wilt for the IMRF fund, and then, um, keeping all of our current IMRF, uh, participation to be continued for the next two years as per this resolution that is
So I have a motion both to appoint Vera Wilt as the authorized agent for Riverside Township, and to, uh, also, um, pass the resolution relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
I'll second it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, on the, uh, page where it says resolution relating, where we have to fill it out?
Yes.
It says either six hundred hours or more, and underneath it says six hundred or a thousand? I think we need to designate that in our motion, whether it's six hundred or a thousand.
Right, it's been filled in as six hundred, which, um, I mean, that's, that's how they recommend, how it came, um, from the executive director, recommended, we didn't type that in.
Oh, we didn't, okay.
We didn't type that in, it, that's the way it came as a recommendation. A thousand would mean that you're pretty much cutting out your trustees and that you're only allowing staff.
Okay, so six hundred then.
Okay, and, um, and so then this, we would then list the, um, the elected positions, the title of the elected position. We don't have to name people, but it would be supervisor, clerk, assessor, and trustees, correct? Okay. Are there any other questions regarding this, uh, motion on a resolution, to pass this resolution? And actually, it's a double-barreled, um, motion to both appoint the authorized agent as well as pass this resolution. Motion and second, correct? We have a second? All right then, call for the motion.
Trustee Dracko?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Luttrell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you very much. Onto the next item, and that is the disposal of some old township computers and electronics. Uh, we have, now, if the assessor, I mean, is that all right, and the items that are, have, had Andy, um, cleared? There were some items in the assessor's storage area, um, oh, okay, sorry. Um, there were some items, some old computers and things down there, did you wanna get rid of any of that, or are you storing that? Okay, so, in this, in the regular township inventory of, uh, dead computers, is five computer desktop towers, five computer printers, one box of miscellaneous old cables and modems and odds and ends like that, and then in the assessor's office storage area, and stop me if any of this should not be gotten rid of, uh, four computer printers.
This one is downstairs?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, those
Those are
I didn't realize they were stored out there, but
Yeah, um, I thought he cleared, he checked with you on these. Uh, there's three computer monitors.
They're probably as
Uh, two desktop computers. Uh, and that says the hard drives on those would be destroyed. Uh, two portable air conditioners, do you wanna get rid of those, or you wanna, you wanna get rid of them?
Yes.
Okay, uh, one overhead projector?
I don't think we should get rid of that.
Okay, we'll strike that. One typewriter?
I don't think we should get rid of that.
Okay, and one VHS player. We can, have you check on this, we can, um, so, but we would need the approval of the board to get rid of these vintage items.
So moved.
A motion to, um, destroy as needed and then, uh, utilize the electronics dumpster at the, uh, village of Riverside Public Works Department to, uh, get rid of the items that are listed on the disposal, except for the overhead projector, the typewriter, and possibly the VHS player.
Second.
Motion and second to, uh, dispose of those items as listed, any discussion?
I have just one question.
Yes.
Shouldn't we wait for the assessor to give us a, a updated list?
Absolutely, I mean, I would, I would say, not to exceed these things listed, how's that? Would that be okay with your motions? Not to exceed these items, but at the, uh, at the direction of the assessor.
That's fine.
Cause there might be some of these that are actually usable items. Um, then, is there any other question, any other discussion? Hearing none? May please call for the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dracko?
Yes.
Trustee Luttrell?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Oh, as long as we're talking about getting rid of things, um, I would like to make a suggestion, you have that computer desk when you walk in your office, it's junk. And there's really no need for it.
The computer or the desk?
Both of them.
Okay.
And you might consider getting rid of those too, because I heard that laptop doesn't work for anything, I've never used it. And that big desk there is, I think it's a waste of your space in your office.
Well, there, yeah, I mean, we do use it for the storage of certain items.
We could use, we could get a file cabinet to take up a lot less space than that huge thing.
We'll certainly evaluate that and, and come with a recommendation to the next meeting, how's that? I've heard that about the computer as well, there was a trustee in the past that used that computer. It was supposed to be for the use of the trustees in general, and other trustees had their own computers, so it wasn't used. So, uh, it is now out of date, as a matter of fact, the, um, the supervisor's computer is also on kind of its last legs, it's no longer, none of the software that is on it is supported anymore, so it's Yes, yes. All right. So, um, thank you for that suggestion, we'll look at that as well. And in the meantime, um, we already passed this item, so we'll move on to, uh, the educational district boot camp, I, it's actually in the budget already, uh, this was often brought to the board for approval. We have a standing, um, resolution on travel, so I don't know that this is necessary, but this is here, more for a reminder, uh, I need to get the first round of boot camp registered, uh, so that we're not paying a higher rate. And so if you have not signed up yet, please, please do, right now, for the July, uh, for the first boot camp, I only have Yes, for the July thirteenth, I have, um, myself, and I think, Tim, I think you're on it, and I don't think anybody else has signed up for that one yet.
I signed up for that.
Did you sign up for that one?
It's the same program, right?
It is the same program on all, on all the dates. I just, I need to know which one you're going to, because we, I wanna send out the registration for the July thirteenth, and actually, the, uh, July twentieth, I know that, uh, Tom, you need to go to that one. And, um, I'm sorry, for the twenty-seventh, you're going to Rockford, not to Mount Vernon, that would be a long drive.
I think, um, I'll be going on the twenty-seventh, so also
Okay.
from April four, so maybe to
Uh, that one, yeah, the Rockford one, it's only the one in Normal that is, I believe, or is it the, uh, it may be the Mount Vernon one that's, um, that's an evening one, all the others are daytime ones.
So is, what, eight to one or two or something?
Um, It's eight until three.
Eight till three, okay.
Yes, eight to three, the last page, uh, of this, this section has the agenda, and the Mount Vernon is the one that is afternoon to evening, it's four until eight-thirty. So, again, that was, uh, I mean, we have approval for education for all of us, you just turn in your, um, things afterwards, but we would like to send a check for this as soon as possible, so.
So do you want us, um, to call tomorrow, or you'll tomorrow and say we're gonna come, on which one we're coming to?
Yes, if you don't tell me tonight, I, I need to note tomorrow, so you're going the twenty-seventh, okay, and so is Tom. And on the twenty, on the thirteenth, we've got myself and Tim. And trustee Dracko, do you know which one?
Yes, thirteen.
You'll go on the thirteenth.
I thought I, you know
You may have, it may be the one up there, and that they just took an, an old sheet, so. All right, and are you going to be going to any or not?
I can't commit to work here, I apologize.
I understand, I understand, very well.
I have a question on
Yes.
travel we have, is there a form we fill out?
Yes, um, yes, there's an expense form which, if you, um, I will get it to you.
Do you put in those boxes?
Right, there, there's expense forms in the, there's like file, standing files in there, uh, above the file where the, uh, warrants are, so, you can get it there. Okay, so I don't think we need any other action on that. We do have, um, an out-of-order, or out-of-schedule, uh, grant request, I don't know if you wanna consider it or not. Yes.
Do we have a resolution that you have to pass on this?
On what's that?
Resolution versus that resolution on the guidelines instead?
No, those, that has been established before, that was just for your information, correct, correct. That was already passed in January, and so that's the resolution on, so that you can find out how the, how you go about expenses, but there is a form for it. So, on to item G. Uh, the grant application, uh, we have it here, I know that it's, you haven't had any advance warning on this, although I know that there was some discussion, is Riverfest a new thing this year?
It's, uh, it's the second year for last year got that, when I'm really storming, remember?
It was a big storm.
Oh, okay.
But it was well-attempted.
Oh, it was great.
Right, well, they, and they have a van, don't they?
Yeah.
They have a van.
Now, it doesn't look like the township did any sponsorship for that last year, because at the end, twenty sixteen, it was just the, uh, the Party Potties and the Magic Show, which Magic Show I think is Christmas time, right?
Magic Show is Christmas time.
So, what is your pleasure, do you want to consider this grant now, or do you wanna pass on it?
I, um, you know, I, I would, I would be in favor of this, but I think that we really need to revamp the grant application process before accepting any new ones, and, you know, we let it all slide, new board, new application process, let's get it together with that. That being said, um, I think we're gonna have to push this aside because, um, it's not a part of the new grant application process.
Trustee, you know, we, you know, we do, um, we do grants in February, May, August, and, or November, I think.
Right, that's what I said, it's not on the cycle, it's not on the schedule.
Yeah.
Plus, I'm not really liking what they're asking for.
Right, it's a very vague, it's a very vague grant, they're asking for a nice bundle of money without a whole lot of
Yeah.
News, and, and as well, the part that I don't like is, as well as pay for insurance and some paid personnel to set up and clean up. This is a chamber-sponsored project, and they should have their volunteers
Right, right.
uh, to set up and clean up.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not negating what they're asking for or anything like that, I think it's, you know, maybe that cleanup language would be, when we get that new application process, maybe your concerns might disappear, who knows? But, I mean, I think, and, and, and again with the sketch But, I mean, I think, and, and, and again with the schedule, you know, I know that we don't put it out there. But, I mean, we could save it in the file and consider it. I think in this particular case, we need to just throw it out, and we can't save it for when the next grant is due. Because we need a new grant application. Does that make sense?
It, it certainly does. I mean, it's not on our schedule for awarding grants that, you know, they.
It came in late too, by rights.
Right, it was just brought in, exactly. It was brought in the end of last week. And, yeah, I mean, it's, it's off schedule, and you want to revise the application process before, so that our next consideration is August, correct?
Uh-huh, correct.
Then, if you have concerns about that grant application process, you need to get me those things so that we can pull together a revised grant.
By one.
Um.
Would we?
Before our next meeting, I would say, so that we can, because if we're going to consider grants in August, then by the July meeting, we should be approving
Having a new.
A new grant application.
Okay. Does that give the applicants enough time to?
If we should get any grant applications in before the July meeting, then we can certainly tell them there's a new application pending, and that we may be asking for supplemental information. And then we would have that month from the July meeting when we would approve a new grant application before the August consideration.
And then in November, then after that, everything has to be through the new one. So, if we would get a grant in, and if it was on the old form, we'd have to tell them that they have a new form.
For the November meeting, I don't have a problem with that. I think some of these groups, you know, they're volunteer organizations, that kind of thing, it might be hard to go back to them and say, turn this around for us, so.
I have no problem with that, Tom.
Yeah.
The other thing too is that we can, we can always email them the new, the new application, or say, we need this updated. Send this back to us with the updated information.
So, if you would get me things by the first week in July, because our meeting is on July 11th, and we want to have packets ready by the 7th. So, I would say before the 4th of July, if you can get that, so that we, we can pull something together and have a proposed new application. Um, and then we can modify it certainly at the July meeting before approving it. But I would like to have all of your input about what you want to see on that application, and, and what kind of rules you want to implement. So, please get those to me by July 3rd. Okay? You'll have that weekend before the holiday, yeah?
Once again, on this grant, the check payee is Joe Longmatia. And I don't want to make grants, I, I think part of a new grant session should be to the organization.
To the people, or to the, you know, what they're, were sponsoring.
Right, the, the 501(c)(3), not a.
They were late, so.
Personal thing.
Can you find out what other townships are doing for their grant applications?
I have not yet. Haven't gotten around to that, but I certainly will reach out to them as well. So, if you have any, I mean, you don't have to wait until the 3rd to scramble in to get that to me. If you have some things, I would say email me the information, so I have it in writing as to what you would like to see changed. And then we'll try to pull something together. Alright. So, that's not on that grant, and I will let them know. By the way, the grants that we dealt with last week, some of them were right, right under the gun, so we contacted them and either mailed them or just got them the check. I did write letters to the Scottish Home explaining, you know, why we were cutting back on it. Um, I explained to Mother Christie why we were denying that one. And I also wrote a letter to the North Riverside Golden Ager's and copied the Recreation Department because I referenced the Recreation Department that in the future, we really need a lot more meat in their application, and that they should turn to the Recreation Department to help them write a grant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Certainly. Okay, on to the next item. And that is the recommendation. We can or don't have to go into closed session on this because really the only issue at this point, the, there were just staff raises approved by the last board shortly before we came into office. Um, and you have the list of what those current salaries or, or compensation is. However, I, having observed for almost a month now what the respective duties and responsibilities are of the office staff, I don't see why one would be hourly and one is salaried. And I would recommend that Andrew Luther be also changed to a salaried position rather than hourly.
Does he want to be changed to a salary?
He would love to be. He's, apparently he approached the supervisor before about it and would prefer it that way. There's very little, um, there's really no reason for it. Um, there has been, and it's a weird thing, the practice has been to actually pay overtime rate on anything beyond the norm, rather than beyond the standard. Normally, you would pay over forty hours in a week is when you would pay time and a half. And the practice has been, and I went through some older payrolls, to do so, anything over thirty hours, which is the
Okay.
Office hours, so I think that that's, that doesn't happen very often. There's an occasional event on a Saturday that he might work for, and sometimes there's, there was some uncompensatory time. But still, overtime doesn't make any sense in that regard. I don't know that we need to change the salary at this point, but I would like to make it, you know, the actual annual pay, but I would like to change it to salary.
Okay, so, I know Margie gets comp time when she's, does the evening Saturday stuff. Andrew usually got overtime.
Mm-hmm, so he would get comp time instead.
So, will he get comp time then?
He would get comp time instead then.
Alright. And then I don't know, what about the janitors?
The janitors, I would keep hourly.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and I may be making, pardon?
Moving forward, I, as a matter of policy, I'd prefer to discuss any employee pay matters in a closed session.
I, and that's fine. I mean, at any time that you want to do that, it simply takes a motion to go to closed session. Um, we weren't, you know, we weren't talking about what the compensation is, or any reason for it other than, like I said, I, having seen what the respective responsibilities are, they are equally, um, serious for both, you know, one does accounts payable, one does payroll. Uh, there's a lot of responsibilities in both positions, so. So, can I have a motion to approve changing that to salaried?
I'll make the move that we change a staff member from hourly to salaried.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second to change the, the staff member in question, the office staff member from hourly to salaried. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, by roll call, please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropko?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandback?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And FYI, that simply, I thought you would like to see, if this is budgeted for, it's one of the town programs, which is the youth theater camp. It just wanted you to see what they've submitted so far as an estimate of what the costs will be. There's actually five thousand in the budget, but I thought you'd want to see what the history of this particular program might be. Are there any other items?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
On the budget here that I'm looking on, the, I don't know what kind of page this is.
Is it out, what's it say on the top?
Riverside Township General Town Fund.
Okay.
And then, well, there are a bunch of them. It's stapled.
Right, okay, so, yeah, we're moving on to the approval of warrants. So, as you can see, there are a number of reports here. Um, the one that has the dark bars across, um, no, there's, there's one that should look like this. Mine is green, but yours was probably put in afterwards because it just came in. This is the report that, um, that Ms. Ertler has been preparing for this board. Um, the night of our special meeting, she came in and she did the reconciliation of the, of the, uh, bank accounts. Um, I also spoke with our accounting firm, pardon? It should have been, you know what, it might still be in your box if you didn't go in there, because it, we just got it today, so we copied it. So, it's in your box. Uh, it's simply, this report is in budget code order as opposed to of the other reports being more grouped by areas of, um, of revenue and expenditure. My question would be whether we want to go forward with continuing to, to hire this additional accounting, um, activity.
Yeah, what is, what is that being done that is different than what we've created?
I've spoken with our regular accounting firm, and they have the, now, it may be that at the time, Teresa started doing this, that the person assigned to our account at the accounting firm was not as facile with software. It was an older person who was doing it for a long time. There is a different person assigned to our account now, who has told me, I could give you a report in that order as well, and also said, well, we reconcile against the bank accounts as well. So, there, we're really doing duplicate work, and we're paying three hundred and fifty dollars extra a month for it.
And how long does that take to do, especially if it's on a computer?
Uh, not very long. The, the reconciliation of the accounts was done the evening of our meeting. I stuck around, and that was done in about an hour. And the, um, the other things were taken home, and then we received this by email today. And printed it and copied it.
Okay, well, this is, first of all, I don't like getting something the day of the meeting, number one.
Right.
Especially since I believe most of us had picked up our packets.
Mm-hmm.
And if we're doing duplicate work, and we're wasting three hundred and fifty dollars a month on doing it, I, I don't see a reason to do it. I mean, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but.
I had communicated that I didn't think the board was, you know, I, I thought that the board might decide to do away with that, and she's fine with it. She said, I completely understand. So, if you'd like to make a motion that we terminate that service, and I will.
I make a motion that we terminate the service of the accounting and save the township the three hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Of the, of this duplicate accounting.
Duplicate, duplicate accounting.
Okay, I have a motion to terminate the service of the individual who's provided this report, and I have a second. Any discussion?
These are broader discussion of the accounting firm and the line item of forty thousand dollars.
Right, well, I also had a question about that, the, um, and at the last minute, when the board approved the, uh, the budget, they increased that line item by fifteen thousand. And that was because of the way paychecks was being paid, because the board was uncomfortable with paying for their services prior to the warrants being approved at a meeting. And the only way to get around that at the time was for our accounting firm to advance that payment, and then we pay them. So, it's, it's not, they're not really collecting that other than as a pass-through, because they advance it to paychecks. Uh, if this board is more comfortable with the automatic, and because it, we wouldn't even have to cut a check. They could just automatically draw that. Um, but that was what the old board was uncomfortable with.
Yeah, one person on the board.
Right, right. And vocal enough to stop the wheels from going forward.
I think that we should put them on the agenda for the next session.
Right.
Because I think it's very complex.
Yes.
You know, to do it the other way.
Which will then change, I mean, the, the line item, it still will be for accounting, but it's so that you don't think it's the accounting firm that's doing it. It's the payroll accounting firm that would be getting that other money, so. We will put that on the agenda as well.
I, I'm sorry, I think we have a motion.
Yes. Yes, to terminate the, um, the dup- duplicated services, so. All in, no, well, we're not spending money.
We need a second.
Oh, we don't have a second yet?
Time second. Trustee Luffer.
Trustee Luffer seconded it. Is there any more discussion on that termination of service? Then, since we're cutting expenses rather than spending money, I'll just call for all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion is carried.
So, going back to this report here, it looks that we're, the township is, is losing money? Or what, I, I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
It's a shock.
Well, okay, so, whenever a budget has been set, it always is based on the fact that there is, there are reserves. And that we never really know how much we're going to collect in taxes, because there are appeals, there are unpaid taxes, we don't always collect everything. However, it turns out that we've been collecting to a better tune. At least last year, we collected more than had been budgeted. However, it's always going to look like we're anticipating less income than expenses because the township isn't supposed to bank a lot of money. It's allowed to keep reserves that are reasonable, and it's, um, it's not supposed to be in a, I'd have to get greater authority on it, but I can remember in the past that it was, it shouldn't be more than uh, like two cycles, it shouldn't be more than like two years worth that you should be banking. And therefore, um, it, they have always budgeted in such a way where it looks like we're operating at a loss, which in fact, we are because we're subsidizing it from reserves. But, um, we don't have much control over the income, and yet we do have certain fixed expenses. And so that's why it looks that way. But when I was just looking at some comparisons of our budgets, and, um, we're, like I said, we actually did better than budgeted for last year. Uh, so, when this current budget was passed, you see that the estimated cash on hand um, was around seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The year before, the estimated cash on hand was nine hundred and thirty thousand, and that was for a few years, it was in that range. So, they did, um, they do that, but also the expenses wound up, they wound up collecting more than anticipated. Um, and in taxes. So, it's, you know, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. In fact, let me see. Let me take a look at the year ending in March. So, for example, the, the actual, um, there was actually more in the reserves than that nine hundred and thirty thousand, seven, it was nine hundred and thirty-three plus, that when they actually did the calculation, when they, when it was audited, that's where it was. Revenues were anticipated to be four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty, and they actually came out to five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
So, you know, it, I can get you some of these reports. I just, I just got the one report today from the accountants because it had not been generated previously, and it, we needed it for a FOIA report. But, um, so the amount of taxes that had been levied were five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, revenues were actually five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, or almost sixty-nine, so. You know, yes, um, the, it is budgeted in such a way, and I think we'll get more comfortable with how the revenue stream works as we go along. Um, but in the meantime, obviously, we need to be very careful with the constituents. we need to be very careful with the constituents' funds, and, uh, operate best way we can. But, anyway, uh, we are up to warrants, and you do have, um, as I said, you can always look at the detail on any of these expenses, so, in general terms, the general warrant list, you see that there's only a few checks that have already been cut, which are those routine things that are approved without actually having to wait for the warrants. All the rest of these items on that first page that you're looking at will be cut tomorrow, and, uh, paid then. Do you have any questions on any of these? Or any of the other, there's the township, township radio players, there's the grants, and those, you see, there are checks, because those were all already paid, except for the last one, where we'll be paying Jerry Owen for the exercise class. And then, when you look at the utility warrants, those, we don't wait for the board meeting, because we don't want to be late on our utilities, so those have already been paid. The payroll warrant, you see that those that are paid, um, you know, some of the payroll is every two weeks, so some of those have already been paid, and the rest, again, um, salaries and, and wages have already been approved. The only ones remaining here, as you can see, are the elected officials that have not yet been paid, and that includes retired board, as well as new board members. And finally, you have the, the health warrant, and that is for the health insurance for those people who participate. And the general assistance warrant, which you're never going to have the names of those individuals, there was an error in cutting a check, and so that's why you have emergency assistance and a void. That emergency assistance was a utility that had been shut off, the person was about to, uh, go in for surgery, and, and was going to be stuck in the house without hot water or, um, or cooking gas, or laundry facilities, um, following the surgery. So, although it was higher than usual, I did grant that emergency assistance. So, those are the warrants, if you have any questions about them before a motion to approve, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Yeah, so, I guess the, the accountant, getting back to, uh, Trustee Luthfer's question about the accountant and the substantial sum, um, I mean, what else does he provide, or they provide for us, besides the-
They've generated several reports already, they, um, generate reports that go to the county, um, they, they assist, um, on generating reports when there's a FOIA about certain things, um, they, they do reconcile the accounts, they, um, they help with setting the tax levy, there's a number of items that they do. Any accounting things that you can think of that we would have to do, they do.
That's pretty standard operating procedure, I would guess.
Right.
So, I'm, do you, do we have to read the, the things, or just-
We have that standard, uh, the motion that Ann used to read, if you want, I filled it out, Tim has it in his hand.
All right, Tim, go for it.
If you'd like to move this around, we can do that, you can each do it in a different month, rather than having one person always responsible for that motion.
It makes no difference.
Okay.
So, Tim wants it every month.
Whoa, 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 I was the first one here.
And he asked, "Who's gonna do it?" I said, "I've got it already, you want to do it?"
All right, we move that the board authorizes and ratifies payments of the bills identified on the general warrant from May 10th through June 13th, 2017, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-two cents, as presented to the board this thirteenth day of June, 2017.
Do we have a second?
Oh, do we?
Yeah, well, we do that one separately, so, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
And, want to take the roll on that?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. You can go on, next one.
I have a motion that the board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, for May 10th through June 13th, 2017. Utility warrant in the amount of one thousand and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, payroll warrant in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents, the health warrant in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, grants from May 10th through June 13th, 2000, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, general assistance warrant in the amount of two thousand and seven dollars and seventeen cents, the township radio players in the amount of two hundred dollars, all of the above, as presented to this board on the thirteenth day of June, 2017.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. And, I think that there was a forum going around here also, we-
Yes, I have it right here, there.
Okay, do you need-
So, do we need a motion to adjourn?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
So, move.
I have, uh, motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion is carried, thank you.